So, across the Commonwealth this spring, moderators have been opening town meetings, which we hope we're going to do, with a story about how 250 years ago, local democracy helped launch a revolution. Before dawn on April 19th, 1775, the alarm was spreading. Hooves were pounding on dusty roads, and bells were ringing across Massachusetts. Signal shots cracked the sky. The news was chilling. The British troops were marching to Lexington and Concord. From Middlesex to Plymouth, farmers and tradesmen, regular teenagers and elders, reached for their muskets. With little training, few supplies, and no nation yet to defend, they stepped onto the road to stand against what was then considered by many the world's strongest army. They had little training and every reason to just stay in bed, and yet still, they went. The first shots of war were fired that morning, but the revolution had begun a lot earlier. Because for more than a century in Massachusetts, our towns had governed themselves through town meeting. It was here that neighbors debated laws and taxes, and rights and responsibilities. By the 1770s, town meetings had grown bolder, not just talking about the cow path, but they had moved from local squabbles to declarations of principles. And eventually, they did acts of defiance. When royal governments were dissolved in 1774, many towns just shrugged and said, "Okay, we got this." And they kept governing themselves through provincial congresses and local militias. In Middleborough, which then Lakeville was a part, the town meeting voiced its frustration, it supported Boston during the Port Act crisis, and stood ready. And when the alarm was reached in Plymouth County, Middleborough militia captain Thomas Weston marched, joining forces in British-occupied Boston. These were not soldiers. They were neighbors, and they were citizens, who, through town meeting, had learned how to govern themselves, talk to each other, hash things out, figure out what, when to pave the road to the dump, and when not to. These local democracies taught Americans the virtues and responsibilities of self-government. And many of us here tonight, myself included, are direct descendants of the people who left us this legacy. They didn't just spark a revolt, they fueled a revolution. So tonight might not feel like history is being made. I'd prefer if history was not being made tonight, and it was much more benign. But this is how liberty endures. Not with fanfare, but with thoughtful participation, which we have our quorum. And occasionally, long meetings. I hope this won't be one. So let us begin. A quorum being present. This annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Select Board on May 19th, 2025. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the Town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable Harold Marshall on May 20th, 2025. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. Now, I need to figure out who our tellers are, because I have two meetings here. And I believe, in the left side, we have Teresa Mira. On the right side, we have Rita Garbutt. The center rear, we have Nancy LaFave. The center front and stage, we have John Oliveri. All have been sworn by the town clerk, and they will serve as our tellers. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, the Town's general bylaws, and by precedent, by prior town meetings, with Town Meeting Time. Which I had in the book. It's a new one. Lucky me, we got to read a new one this year. This is the fourth edition of Town Meeting Time. And I think it's the first one that was written in the last 40 years. We will continue this precedent. On the warrant are articles that alert you to the business that we're going to conduct this evening. We vote on motions, not on articles. For an article to be considered, someone must first make a motion, and then that motion must be seconded. For articles on the warrant that were put there by a Select Board member or the Planning Board, a member of these boards will be the first to make the motion. And by precedent, the maker of the motion has the first chance to speak to it after it has been seconded. I'll then ask the Finance Committee for a recommendation and any other pertinent committee's recommendations, such as the Planning Board. And following their statements, any registered voter is welcome to speak to the article. When discussion is finished, we will vote. There are two microphones, slightly to the center of each aisle, halfway up. Please approach a microphone to be recognized by me as moderator. If you have a motion or an amendment, please have it prepared in writing. And after stating your motion, present it to me, and I'll pass it on to the town clerk. All discussions should be directed through me, the moderator. Comments should not be directed at each other. And this helps keep the meeting focused. I generally do not limit how long you may speak, but please keep your comments brief and focused on the article's scope. Don't introduce new information and on the action proposed. Discussion must be on what the specific motion proposes. And this is because the warrant itself alerts people to what we're going to talk about. So that's why we don't bring in new stuff. I will exercise my prerogative to keep the meeting moving, and I may interject to encourage the speaker to wrap up their commentary in the interest of keeping the meeting moving. We ask that speakers only approach the microphone if they have something new or pertinent to say that has not already been said. I'll try to give everyone first shot at the microphone before allowing people to return for further comments, unless those people are necessary to answer a point raised or a question raised. Please be respectful. Do not make your points, your comments personal, directed at individuals. I realize that sometimes things can be very heated, but let's keep it all civil. Anyone who disrupts the meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out and may not return. Every vote matters to me, so do not lose yours. I would like to take a moment to explain amendments. A motion to amend, an active motion, requires a second and may be debated. We will vote only on one amendment at a time, and then we will vote on amendments before we go back to vote on the original motion. And if you have an amendment, please bring it up here in writing, and the town clerk actually has a form that you can fill out if you need it. Points of order. If you have a point of order, you may stand anywhere in the room and loudly state it from your seat. To clarify, a point of order is limited to whether the speaker has the right to the floor or is saying something against parliamentary procedure. Calling the question ends debate. Attempts to call the question before discussion will not be permitted. And if you make a statement at the microphone, you may not then call the question. It must be an individual action. When a motion comes to a vote, I will ask you to hold up the orange-colored voting card that you received. Do not lose the card, they cannot be replaced. During voting, please keep your card raised until I ask you to lower it. And if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, then you can lower your card. If I need to have a counted vote, I will ask the tellers to count, and you will have to keep them raised until I tell you to lower them. There is a yes and a no on the card that's only used if we have to go to a balloted vote, and I would give instructions on how that would work if we do. A motion to reconsider is only acceptable if new information has come to light that might have caused members of the meeting to vote otherwise had that information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider will not be considered acceptable simply because a lot of people have left, and you think the vote's going to go differently now that they're not here. That's a parliamentary ploy, and I will not allow it. A motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds vote in order to move forward. Please keep your phones on silent mode. Lake Cam is recording the meeting. It is also being streamed on Facebook. And at this time, we traditionally recognize those members of the community who have served our town in public office and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Please stand and offer a moment of silence for Marilyn Hunt, Park Commissioner from 1976 to 1985, and a poll worker from 1978 to 2020. Please remain standing to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we are. One nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice.
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would like to introduce the members of the town seated upon the stage. We have Lillian Drain, Town Clerk; Greg Corbo, Town Council; Maureen Candido, Select Board; Lorraine Carbone, Select Board; Paul Hunt, Select Board; Chris Plonka, Select Board; Andrew Sukforth, Town Administrator. I'm going to look and see who we have on the other side. Is that Mike Ellis next? Mike Ellis, Town Accountant. And on the other side, Darren Beals, Chair of the Finance Committee; Larry Constant, Finance Committee; Barbara Mankowski, Finance Committee; and Michael Wright, Finance Committee. Did I get everybody? As you got further down, it was harder to see. The following non-residents have either requested to speak or may be asked to speak tonight. We'll need a motion for the following non-residents. If there are any questions or concerns regarding any names on this list, just shout from your seat, hold, and we will hold them. I will not remove that person. I will remove that person from the list, and we'll consider them separately. So we have Greg Corbo, Town Council; Andrew Sukforth, Town Administrator; Erica Correa, Town Treasurer/Collector; Franklin Moniz, Lakeville Superintendent of Streets; Jennifer Jones, Lakeville Library Director; Lori Fahey, Lakeville Council on Aging Director; Dr. Barbara Starkey, Lakeville Free Town Interim Superintendent of Schools; and Aaron Polanski, Superintendent Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical School. I need a motion and a second from our community to have them speak.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? That motion passes. Now, does everybody have a copy of the warrant? If you do not have one, we will get one for you. Just raise your hand if you need a copy of the warrant. I see no hands, so everybody has come with their homework. I now seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? Great, that motion has been approved as well. Now, this is where it's going to get a little bit weird. I now need a motion to recess the annual town meeting so that we may open the special town meeting. Do the business of the special. And when we're done with the two items on the special, we will then move back to do the business of the annual. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your cards. You may lower them. Thank you. So now we're opening the special town meeting. Mr. Corbo, should I read the opening points of the special declaring when and where this was posted?
Madam Moderator, yes.
Correct, okay. Just making sure. I have to endure this one more time. This is the legal stuff. A quorum being present. This special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen May 19th, 2025. The warrant was posted on the town's official website pursuant to the Town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable Harold Marshall on May 20th, 2025. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the Massachusetts bylaws of the Town, of the General Bylaws of the Town, and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. We will have the same assistant, the tellers. We have Teresa Mira, left side; Rita Garbutt, right side. We have Nancy LaFave, center rear; and center front and stage, John Oliveri. All have been sworn by the town clerk. The meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts laws, general laws, the Town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. We do still rely on the volume Town Meeting Time fourth edition as the standard of conduct for Lakeville town meetings. And when you first came in and registered, you should have received a copy of that warrant. Does everybody have a copy of the special town meetings warrant? Great, okay. So, we can now move to Article 1 of the special town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $83,451 for capital improvements and equipment, and all related equipment, supplies, and labor, and the amounts for the purposes and from the funding sources listed in Article 1 of the special town meeting warrant.
Give me a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so would you like to speak to it?
Yes. So back in November 12th, 2024, at our special town meeting, there was a vote to do away with our transfer station enterprise account and make it become a town department. And with that, there was $83,451 in retained earnings. And there are some capital items that have come in front of us to be purchased. And those are listed in your warrant article. For the transfer station, a compact with equipment for $32,000; an LED light replacement for $12,000; and facility repairs in the amount of $39,451, totaling to $83,451.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussion. Seeing no one approach a microphone, we may go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed? The motion passes. Article 2.
I move that the town vote to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as shown in Article 2 of the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Carbone, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, so we're entering into fiscal year '26. We're currently in FY '25. So there's some bills from FY '24 that are still, that had just come in, so we need to address those. And that's in the amount of $10,767.82.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. Seeing no one approach a microphone, this requires a nine-tenth majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed? We will go to a count. Tellers, would you please get up? Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your cards again and leave them raised.
Twenty-two.
What was the last one, forty-seven or twenty-seven? I heard nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-six. What was the last number? Twenty-seven, thank you. You may lower your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. One, zero, zero, and was there one more zero? Less zero, okay. Did anybody count the stage? Okay, the motion passes ninety-seven to one. I now need a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We will now proceed to the annual. Now, we have something a little different. As you can see, sometimes we need to count a vote. We have traditionally counted our two-thirds vote. However, I'd like to address a procedural point. On our town website, under the section "Defining Town Meeting Terms", you'll see that language allowing the moderator to determine a two-thirds vote by voice when the result is clear. Voice can mean you raise your cards and you say "aye". As many of you know, I struggle with calling a two-thirds vote, especially when there are just a few dissenting votes opting for a full count in such cases. Town Council has advised that I bring this to the meeting for approval. So it's all tied up nicely. This is what the website explains. The moderator may decide a two-thirds or majority vote by voice in situations where the result is obvious. However, if following the moderator's call, if seven or more members immediately rise and say, "I doubt the vote", we will go right to a counted vote. So it's not like we take away the power, we just make things more efficient. So with that in mind, I would like to ask for a motion to authorize the moderator to determine a two-thirds vote by voice and card, because I want the cards to see it so that everybody can see what it looks like, to leave no doubt to the call. And of course, if I cannot determine a two-thirds vote by voice and card, I will ask for a counted vote. Any discussion on this? And I will not be offended if you don't like this idea. Okay. All those in favor, this requires a majority vote only. Please raise your cards. Any opposed? You may lower them. Any opposed? The passes. Thank you. We have a few of those tonight, so this might make things a little easier. On to Article 1.
I move that the town vote to determine the salaries of all elected officers and to raise and appropriate and to transfer $58,169 from the septic loan program for a total appropriation of $39,013,519 due to freight town expenses for the fiscal period July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, inclusive said sums to be allocated in accordance with the handout entitled "Supplemental Information: FY 2026, Town of Lakeville General Fund Operating Budget Detail."
You'll note that what Mr. Plonka said at the very end is pointing you to the correct document to refer to. I need to hear a second. Great, thank you. Now, it is our tradition for the Finance Committee Chair to read the budget before discussion. I now invite Mr. Beals to read the budget. In the interest of efficiency, I ask that anyone who wishes to discuss a line item in the budget in greater detail shout "hold" from their seat. I will make a note of the request, and after Mr. Beals has finished reading the budget, we will return to any held items for further discussion. Mr. Beals.
All right, thank you. I invite you to follow along as I read the budget. Should I make an error with the numbers? The figures you see in your warrant packet are the correct ones, so please refer to what is written and not necessarily what I say. It's only three pages, let the fund begin. There we go. This is the fiscal year 2026, Town of Lakeville General Fund Operating Budget Detail, starting with the general government. Selectmen and Admin: Salaries $322,445. Expenses $57,250. Finance Committee: Expenses $400. Reserve Fund Budget: $100,000. Town Accountant: Salaries $167,607. Expenses $2,650. Assessor: Salaries $177,362. Expenses $50,420. Treasurer/Collector: Salaries $214,701. Expenses $79,300. Legal Services: Expenses $75,000. Human Resources: Salaries $158,971. Expenses $41,250. Information Technology: Expenses $463,700. Town Clerk: Salaries $187,095. Expenses $13,500. Elections: Expenses $27,500. Board of Registars: Expenses $8,100. Conservation: Salaries $31,007. Expenses $825. Planning Board: Salaries $143,604. Expenses $2,000. Appeals Board: Expenses $100. Town Office Fire Station: Expenses $108,800. Facilities: Salaries $209,397. Expenses $28,000. Town Report: Expenses $800. Cable TV Advisory: Expenses $5,000. Total General Government: $2676,784. Moving on to Public Safety: Police: Salaries $2562,779. Expenses $223,620. Fire: Salaries $1837,121. Expenses $151,900. Building Inspection: Salaries $282,210. Expenses $2,900. Part-Time Inspector: Salaries $63,600. Emergency Management: Salaries $2,500. Expenses $5,480. Animal Control: Salaries $121,416. Expenses $22,190. Total Public Safety: $5,275,716. Next, Education: Free Town Lakeville School Committee Stipends: $6,500. Operating Assessment: $17,293,565. Transportation: $352,429. Excluded Debt: $135,480. Old Colony Regional Vote: $2,714,699. Agricultural High School: $524,422. Norfolk Agricultural: $74,014. Total Education: $21,101,109. Public Works Highway: Salaries $927,074. Expenses $258,450. Snow and Ice: Salaries $35,000. Expenses $100,000. Street Lighting: Expenses $25,000. Transfer Station: Salaries $162,92. Expenses $220,950. Cemetery: Expenses $10,900. Total Public Works: $1,739,466. Human Services: Board of Health: Salaries $123,548. Expenses $9,550. V&amp;A Services: $5,000. Council on Aging: Salaries $232,706. Expenses $30,060. Veterans: Salaries $51,804. Expenses $169,080. Total Human Services: $621,748. Culture and Recreation: Library: Salaries $322,758. Expenses $118,525. Historical Commission: Expenses $450. Total Culture and Recreation: $441,733. Debt Service: Principal: Six hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four. Interest: One hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Short-term Interest: One hundred and twelve thousand. Total Debt Service: Nine hundred and forty-eight thousand sixty-two. Fixed Costs: Regional Planning: Two thousand five hundred and five. Plymouth County Retirement: One million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and ninety-five. Unemployment: Five thousand five hundred and thirteen. Group Insurance: Two million four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-nine. Risk Management: Four hundred thousand seven thirty-seven. Total Fixed Costs: Four million six hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. Total General Fund: Thirty-seven million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seven.
Thank you, Mr. Beals. Mr. Plonka, would you now care to speak to it?
This article is basically our FY twenty-six budget that we're voting on tonight.
I had to give that man a drink. Okay, the floor is, oh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
Hi, good evening. I'm Noelle Rillo, resident, speaking as a resident. Maybe my memory doesn't serve me well, but one of the numbers that I heard was different from what I remember it being, and it was the salary for HR. It was a hundred and fifty-two or three thousand, is that correct?
Mr. Plonka?
I have the salary line item for HR, line item twelve, is one fifty-eight, hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one.
Why do I remember that as being ninety-two thousand? Because HR is a relatively new position, if I'm not mistaken.
Would anybody on the Select Board care to speak to that?
It's possible that I just don't remember that being...
Ms. Candida would like to respond.
It's not relatively new, the department's been around probably about since twenty eighteen. We had a director starting in twenty eighteen, but that's the whole department salaries. So everyone under the umbrella, not just...
And how many people are, if you don't mind?
Two?
Okay, do you know what the breakdown is?
I don't think we have breakdowns anymore, I think we have them summarized in our budget books. I will, Madam Moderator, pass that over to the Town Accountant if he has that handy.
Okay. We're going to consult with the Town Accountant.
Sorry to ask you to do that, it's just, appreciate it.
I appreciate people asking questions.
So, Mike Ellis, Town Accountant. The breakdown is ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the Director.
Okay.
And fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars for a Payroll Specialist.
A Payroll Specialist?
Yep.
Okay, that explains it better to me than, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes. On to Article Two.
Madam Moderator, on advice of Town Council, for the purpose of this article, the Parks Department Enterprise Fund and the Parks Commission are interchangeable.
Thank you.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the Park Department Enterprise Fund as follows. Twenty thousand dollars to be transferred from Park retained earnings and two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to be raised from estimated Park receipts. Said sums to be allocated between salaries and expenses of the Park Department for the fiscal period July one, twenty twenty-five, to June thirty, twenty twenty-six, inclusive, as indicated in Appendix B, Town of Lakeville, FY two zero two six, Parks Budget.
Second. Thank you. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Hunt?
This is the fiscal year twenty-six budget for the Parks Department.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
Not a discussion, but a point. I'm going to invoke Joseph Chamberlain as an English teacher, and, yes, very true. So, in the red where it says "the motion," it says "to be raised form," estimated Park, should that read "from"?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it.
Correct.
You're welcome.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Corbo? Mr. Corbo says it's okay. But thank you, we will, we will correct that. Yes.
Paula Hoo, Twin Oaks Road, Lakeville. This refers to a park department. I don't know that we have a park department in Lakeville.
Yes. Mr. Hunt clarified at the beginning, before he read the article, that for the purposes of this article, that the Parks Department and Park Commission are considered interchangeable, that terminology. He consulted with Town Council. Mr. Corbo, would you care to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Greg Corbo, Town Council. Yes, it was brought to my attention that the Parks something is referred to as a Parks Commission, although in the warrant, it's referred to as a Parks Department. In my opinion, the purpose of this article and the enterprise generally is for the purpose of operating the town's parks, whether that be a department or a commission. The intent is the same, as my opinion, that those two terms, department or commission, can be used interchangeably, and the outcome of the vote is the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes. Article Three.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for capital improvements and equipment and all related equipment, supplies, labor, and anything incidental or related thereto in the amounts for the purposes and from the funding sources listed in Article Three of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Candida, would you...
I will. Article Three is raising and appropriating and transferring funds. On line one, the Facilities Department, we're transferring funds for the library roof replacement in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund. For the library heating systems replacement controls, we're transferring forty thousand dollars from Capital Stabilization. For the cab and chassis with dump and salt equipment in the amount of two hundred thousand, we're taking two hundred thousand out of Capital Stabilization for the total amount of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion.
Hi, Melissa Reposo. I just have one question on the roof for the library roof replacement, the two hundred and fifty thousand. Were there, like, multiple quotes sent out for that, or how does that work when you guys come up with a figure?
That is a good faith estimate at this time, and that was brought in by our TA, who spoke with, I can't tell who he spoke with, but it's a good faith estimate. We have not got quotes yet, we haven't gone for an RFP until after we appropriate the money.
Mr. Sukforth, would you care to continue to elaborate?
Yeah, thank you.
You need to speak into a mic.
Yeah, we generally get... Thanks. We generally get one quote upfront to get a good faith estimate of what this would be, and then we would then get the money and then go out and do a formal invitation for bids.
So the quote, the quote was based on, it was, the amount was based on one quote that you got initially?
Yeah, it was from a roofing company that generally runs high, so it was a good estimate based off what it's going to be after this point.
But it will go out for bids?
Yes, of course.
To contractors for the best one after?
We agree we have to, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming to a microphone, this may go to a vote, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed? This motion passes. Article Four.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for capital improvements and equipment and all related equipment, supplies, and labor in the amounts for the purposes and from the funding sources listed in Article Four of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Ms. Candida, would you care to speak to it?
Certainly. Get my paperwork in order, one second. Article Four is another transfer of funds article. We have a number of items that we need to transfer from free cash and Parks retained earnings. The MS four engineering in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from free cash. The town website improvement in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from free cash. The operating capital in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from free cash. The police vehicle replacement with equipment for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand from free cash. And the fire from the ladder truck lease for a hundred and seventy-five thousand from free cash. Roadway improvements, a hundred thousand from free cash. Bud permit material removal, twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash. And the new roof at Ted Williams Camp Park Office, fifteen thousand dollars from Park retained earnings, for the total of five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Beals, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
Hi, Nolan Howard, resident. I'd just like some clarification on the extent of the upgrades to the town website that's going to cost thirty thousand dollars.
Ms. Candida, would you like to spill that, or would it, Mr. Sukforth care to...
Mr. Plonka, do you, have you updated yet?
Oh, Mr. Plonka.
This was Member Day's project, so...
Okay, Mr. Plonka?
I will say Mr. Plonka or Andrew would be the best to answer that.
I will, I am taking over the role for the Technology Committee. I've not had an opportunity to review that, so I will defer to Town Administrator.
So it's going to be a complete upgrade. We have about four modules, widgets, whatever you want to call them, it's going to be upgradable to about thirty. Our website, as it exists today, is going to be downgraded, I think, in a few months because it's, we're on like a legacy type of program on it. So I think thirty thousand's a, it's a healthy estimate. It's between twenty and thirty. We're going to form a website working group to basically get feedback from residents and town departments alike to see exactly what we want to see. But a big, a big component is ADA improvements. Communication is, is not great on the current website, and I think that's going to be the focus of this new platform. We want to get the message out, documents to be found easy, all that, and I think there's going to be a good working group. We're probably going to send it out for residents if you're interested. So, that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Dolan, resident. I just have a, kind of a general question of maybe thirty or forty other people are thinking to ask and not. I'm, I'm a little taken with just the number. I, you know, and I understand there are just numbers and you'd, you'd need fifty pages to explain what these are, but when I look at just a simple one like road improvements, a hundred thousand dollars, what roads does that apply to? Because, I don't know about you, but ninety percent of the roads in this town could use improvement. So that, that's something that I would be interested to know, where is that hundred thousand going to? And the other thing would be like the vehicle replacement with equipment. Could, could you be a little bit more specific on what vehicle that is that is being replaced and the equipment in it, instead of just a bulk amount of money to be spent?
Madam Moderator, I can take the police one, and then I would defer to Frank for the GPW.
Okay, so Ms. Candida will answer the first part of the question.
Uh, the second part.
Oh, the second part, the police part.
Item number four, the vehicle replacement with equipment, that is two police vehicles. And the equipment is the equipment that you find in the police vehicles.
Okay, and Mr. Moniz, would you care to approach a microphone?
Want to repeat your question, please?
I didn't ask the question yet.
He was asking about which roads are planned and how we came about that number.
So, historically, we usually do two fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand a year. That's in addition to our Chapter Ninety. We have a comprehensive pavement management plan we follow. This year, we just completed eight roads, that was using both capital money and Chapter Ninety money. Moving forward this year, we'll be doing Holland Road, Staples Show's Road, Colling Drive, and we continue to chip at the pavement management plan, which ranks our roads in different categories, and that's the basis of...
Thank you, Mr. Moniz.
Yeah, my name is Charles Gates. A question on the, the ladder truck lease, what's the period of time? How many years does that lease go for? And what's the, the buyout arrangement, the purchase agreement? Is there any purchase agreement after the lease expires?
I will direct that to Ms. Candida.
It was a ten-year lease instituted about two years ago, so we're two years into a ten-year lease. It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and at the end of that time, we do own the vehicle.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes. Article Five.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from free cash to the other post-employment benefits trust, otherwise known as OPEB.
I need a second. Second. Thank you. Ms. Carbone, would you care to speak to this?
Every year, we have been putting money aside for an obligation to the town. This year, it's a little less than what we typically allocated, but this is falling in line with what our requirements are to the state for post-employment benefits.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. Seeing no one approach a microphone, this may go to a vote, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes. Article Six.
I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues for the purposes and in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, as shown in Article Six of the annual town meeting warrant, with each item to be a separate appropriation.
Thank you, I need to hear a second. Second. Ms. McCaffrey, would you care to speak to this?
Sure. So every year, we have to put ten percent into each of the three categories, being historic, community housing, and open space and recreation is one category, as well as up to five percent for administrative expense. And this year, the committee is only looking for three percent for that administrative expense, with the rest of it going into the budget of reserve.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed? This motion passes. Article Seven.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserve for the purpose of gravestone repairs at Thompson Hill Cemetery.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Ms. Spiel, would you care to speak to this?
Yes, the Cemetery Commission has requested ten thousand dollars to restore some more stones, the older stones in town, so that they can get on the historic commission. I don't know if Nancy Lefebvre wants to speak to this more, or... We did have a handout, but for some reason, it didn't get passed out.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Good. The floor is open for discussion. We may now go to a vote. All those in favor, oh, this requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed. This motion passes. Ms. Spielert, would you please bring your, your motion up to the front? And we will move on to Article eight.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be transferred from free cash to fund the costs related to the payments of accrued contractual compensated absences due employees upon retirement or resignation.
Second.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to this, Mr. Hunt?
I would. The purpose of this is to earmark some funds that are related to employee retirements and their contractual compensation upon retiring or leaving the service of the town. So in the past, when somebody has either retired or left and was due some money, there was no money set aside for that. So this is to eliminate the surprise of that funding.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing no one approaching a microphone, we may go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed, raise your cards. This motion passes. Article nine.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town code, general bylaw, Chapter 251, Vehicles, to add a new section, 251-4C, related to enforcement of the bylaw as shown in bold in Article nine of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, would you care to speak to this?
I had come to the board's attention that the current bylaw has no mechanism for enforcement. And this article strengthens the ability for the town to take enforcement for this bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion.
Rodney Dixon, 39 Baker Lane. What about boats? I know motor vehicles, self-explanatory, but what about boats that are unregistered?
Mr. Corbo.
I would defer to the Building Commissioner for his ultimate interpretation, but I would not believe that a boat is a vehicle within the meaning of the bylaw. That being said, there may be other provisions of law that would prohibit someone from storing a boat in their yard, but this is specifically, in my opinion, targeted towards unregistered motor vehicles that are being parked in places where they shouldn't be.
Thank you. For clarification, for whoever's going to answer the question that you defer to, it would be an unregistered boat, for clarification. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed. This motion passes. Article 10.
I move that the town accept provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, as printed on Article 10 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Candido, would you care to speak to this one?
I would probably have Erica, our treasurer, elector, speak to this article.
So I attended a meeting a few weeks back. Someone from the state was there. It was brought to my attention that we did not accept this bylaw. And it pretty much comes into play where if there's abandoned property or tailings, it won't have to go to the state, it can stay with the town.
Thank you. Mr. Beals, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing no one come to a microphone, we may go to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All opposed. This motion passes. Article 11.
I move that the town vote to accept and confirm the layout of a portion of Harrison Ave. Avenue, a public way on the town, as depicted in the layout plan referenced in Article 11, and otherwise approve Article 11 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to this, Ms. Candido?
I am actually going to defer to the town administrator on this, in specific.
Mr. Sukforth.
Thank you. So this is tied to the Route 79 project. When there's a state-funded project, Mass. DOT requires that any roadway within the project limits that's being improved has to have a recorded deed plan of what that roadway looks like. We're finding on some of these old roads that there is no recorded plan. And so this basically confirms the layout that was then produced by the surveyor of current conditions.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not have a recommendation.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. Seeing, no, no, nobody is coming to a microphone, just making sure. This requires a two-thirds majority vote, so here goes the great experiment. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes unanimously. Article 12.
I move that the town accept the alter, the alteration of layouts of the public ways in the town, listed and shown in the plan referenced in Article 12, and otherwise approve Article 12 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Candido, would you care to speak to this?
This is of the same vein as the last article, but I will defer.
Mr. Sukforth?
Thank you. And to continue on from Article 11, any, then the roads that are going to be altered, in this case, it's going to be sidewalks and roadway widening, those then have to be approved in a roadway layout, which is what you should see in your packets.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does not have a recommendation.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Mr. Marshall.
Bob Marshall, 16 Barso Street. Just a point of information, when is that project going to begin?
Mr. Sukforth?
So they're doing the, the easements and the takings kind of right now, but I believe construction's going to start fall of '26.
Thank you.
We may now go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And keep them up for a second. Thank you. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes unanimously. Article 13.
I move that the town vote to amend the Langford, the Lakeville Town Code zoning bylaw, Section 270-2.1, by adding the language shown in bold as printed in Article 13 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
I heard a second. Okay, Ms. McCacken, would you please speak to this?
Sure. So in fall, we brought to town meeting, and it was approved for the ADU language and definition, going along with what the state had presented to us, acknowledging that any changes would have to come back in spring. So here we have a minor addition that kind of helps address any changes as it goes forward.
Thank you. Mr. Beals, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not have a recommendation.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion. Seeing no one at a microphone, this requires, what? Oh. Oh, no, that's quite all right. Please.
There are areas of town that have, what was originally called, when I moved, a restrictive covenants. How does this impact the restrictive covenants? Are the restrictive covenants no longer in play? In, in the, if it was any deed, or are they still in play?
Mr. Corbo will answer that or try to address it.
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. So this is only a zoning bylaw, and it does not affect any private relationships or contracts. So if you have a, a deed restriction or a restrictive covenant that you're subject to, that would still apply despite what the zoning bylaw says.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes unanimously. Article 14.
I move that the town vote to amend the Lakeville Town Code zoning bylaw, 270-7.8, by deleting said section in its entirety, as printed in Article 14 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second, I heard a second. Okay. Now you're going to...
And then I have a, I have a second motion to, I move to postpone this indefinitely.
Okay. So a motion to postpone indefinitely is debatable and requires a majority vote. So the debatable part means you can explain why. So would you explain why you would like to postpone this motion indefinitely?
Right. So we were deleting this section in the zoning bylaw based on the adoption of the previous, section in the previous article. It was coming to our attention pretty late in the game that there were additional references of this, this item in a couple of the sections that were not able to make it to the warrant and not able to be reviewed by the planning board. So we want to table it for the next town meeting.
Thank you. Okay. So this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of postponing this indefinitely, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Any opposed? This is postponed indefinitely. Article 15.
I, I think I just heard him say he wanted to postpone to the next town meeting, and then we postponed it indefinitely.
No, it's to postpone indefinitely. That's what we voted on, to postpone indefinitely. He doesn't get to decide when it goes, we only voted to postpone indefinitely.
All right. So in other words, it can be brought up at some future point, is that right?
Yes, it can be. It probably will be, but we don't know when. Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend the Lakeville Town Code zoning bylaw, Section 270-6.7, site plan review, by adding the language shown in bold and deleting the language shown as strike-through, as printed in Article 15 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Need to hear a second. Thank you. Ms. McCacken, would you care to speak to this?
Yes. So this, our site plan review bylaw, when we had our town planner with us, we had asked her to help us tighten it up and look at it and review things that could make it better. One of the things that we're adding is requesting a use to be stated upfront, because we know that parking is tied to use, and sometimes when there's not enough parking, it's become an issue after the fact. Also, we've added some items that are not subject to site plan review, making that something that was not prior there. But now it's sort of clearer what things don't require site plan review, as opposed to just having a whole list of things that do require it. We looked at different towns, had some different language that we tossed around, and this is what we had agreed to, the planning board, is with the help of the prior town planner.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does not have a recommendation.
And Ms. McCacken, I presume that the planning board...
Yes, the planning board voted to recommend.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing no one, oh, yes, we have someone. Hold that line.
Dick Scott, Proshpon Road. Does this mean, based on what you said, if a use does change on a property, that this would apply? In other words, I think what I heard you say was this bylaw requires the use to be stated. So would I, if there was a future change in a use, how would that be handled? Would that have to go to the variance board or come back to the planning board as a change in use with the same requirements?
So for exist, so, so what we're including is, is asking for a site plan review to show the use that they're proposing. So all those triggers that you see in there are still going to apply that trigger site plan review, but we're going to be looking at the use and comparing it to the parking so that we can be sure that for that site plan review, we can provide the required parking based on that use.
Mr. Corbo, would you care to add anything to that or?
Thank you, through you, Madam Moderator. Just for pointed clarification, the bylaws that exist right now require site plan review for any change in use of a commercial building, and that's not changing. Only the, some of the particulars are being changed by this.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo.
Noel Rillo, as a resident again. I just want to take the opportunity to point out that what has just been said right now points out exactly why we need that town planner.
Thank you. Thank you. This requires, I believe, a two-thirds vote?
Yes.
Two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. All those opposed, please raise your cards. This motion passes unanimously. Article 16.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town code, general bylaw, Chapter 15, Finance Committee, to add language to Section 15.1, as shown in bold in Article 16 of the annual town meeting warrant.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Planca, would you speak to this?
Yes, this, this article simply amends the town bylaw. It makes a minor change in replacing the elected, the election of the Finance Committee members from the annual town meeting to annual town election. And it also allows the Finance Committee to participate in the Economic Development Committee. That committee was previously voted on to be implemented by the Select Board.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have any recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
The floor is open for discussion. Okay, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. You may lower them. Opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. I now need a motion to dissolve...
Show move.
...this meeting! All those in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed? Safe travels, everyone, and thank you for coming. Appreciate it. [inaudible][1775.62]